Now, we're recording.
Oh, good.
I don't care. I don't care too much about picture quality. I just wanna have that for a reference for what we are discussing. I've got two copies of this here. I don't know how well you'll be able to read it, but the... This is the first draft of the DeDalian's presentation. Now, they asked me to introduce you, which I will. And in my introduction, I'm gonna talk about how how difficult it's been to go through to shorten the presentation, you know, for time considerations. But I thought if you could tell that story about that dining in and about the speakers with the guy reading through a little bit of an icebreaker.
Okay, I can do that.
But now, what I'll do is, in the final version of the outline, I'm gonna have little thumbnails of the photos that we decide to use so that they'll be there along with the topic.
That's good.
So we can kinda follow along.
That's great. That's great.
And I don't know if you like to work off an outline for the presentation.
I do.
But the way... Let me, let me show you. If you imagine that this is the room and there's, there's tables where people will be sitting at, you know, both sides, and the tables are kind of angled like that and so on till the end of the room. This is the entrance to the room right here. And there's, there's a speaker over here. There'll be a table to put, you know, anything we wanna display. And then, at this table is gonna be a computer and a projector that will be projecting up on the wall what we're showing. And I kinda thought that, that maybe the best thing to do, and this is actually not too much to scale, but I thought if you could just sit in the chair right there and they'll have a mic and, you know, it's amplified. And I can be sitting here and I'll, I'll operate the computer and keep the thing projected. And actually, you might wanna be sitting a little bit farther back like that or set in an angle over here so you can see what's being projected or whatever. But it's, it's a little less, a little more intimate a setting than the historical society. But we'll get there early enough that we can get things set up and we can see what works out best so that if you and I need to communicate about something. But I'll be, I'll be running the, you know, scrolling through the pictures so you don't need to worry about that stuff.
Now, will it be set up so that I could stand up for a while if I wanted to?
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, 'cause I'll... I probably won't wanna stand for the whole thing, but I could stand and sit.
Absolutely. Absolutely. I mean, normally, the speaker stands right in this area here and gives the presentation. And, you know, they'll be pointing at things on, you know, that's projected up on the wall, you know, and you can certainly do that. But then, you've got the option of sitting if you want to.
Okay, that would be fine.
So that's kinda the layout of things. And we'll have to figure out... Oh, the other thing is, I asked Art about videotaping. And I said that you would ask if it could be videotaped. And he, he said he didn't think that would be a problem.
Good.
We'll, we'll check.
Now, this is Clark?
Art.
Art.
Art. Art Stark.
Art Stark.
Is, is my friend who I went through pilot training with at Loflin Air Force Base in 1970 and 71. And Art does all the audiovisual stuff.
Good.
So he's, he's the guy that we'll be working with. Great guy. You'll enjoy meeting him. And, but anyway, I just asked Art. He emailed me the other day and asked if there was anything we needed his help with for the presentation. And I, I responded and asked him if it would be possible to videotape that you would ask if we could do that. And he said, "I don't think that's a problem." But we'll see. They may, the higher-ups may say, "Well, we have a policy against that."
I see.
If, if they don't have a policy against it, I mean, I'm, I'm gonna bring the camera and the tripod. We'll set it up and we'll, we'll find a place, the best place to...
Okay.
I'm, I'm kinda thinking that if we can have some... Set the camera up here. Of course, there'll be people sitting on both sides of this table, but...
I'm curious about what medium you have for recording. Is that small tapes or...
No, that's all digital.
All digital.
It's flash memory, a solid-state memory. And that is what they call 4K video. It's twice the resolution of high-definition video.
So what do you have in there, just a little disc, a little...
It's not even a disc.
A little plate or...
It's, it's not even that. It's a, it's a chip.
Huh.
It's a memory chip. And I download it directly to my computer and I edit that file. And the reality is that if you do anything with tape anymore today, you have to convert it to digital before you edit it. So this just eliminates tape and the chain of, of, you know, storage.
Do you have the capability of taking tapes? 'Cause my cameras were used tapes.
I can convert anything to digital.
You can?
Yep. I don't care what format tape you have. If it's even back VHS tape. If it's foreign, if it's South American PAL, if it's European PAL, I can convert all that. So, Hi-8, Super 8. If it's, now, if it's an 8mm film, I took all my 8mm film to a company over in Chandler that, that does the conversion. That's the only thing I don't do in-house.
It's 8mm tapes, 8mm film?
8mm film. 8 or 16mm film. I, I learned a long time ago that this place over in Chandler, they do such a fantastic job. And they've got some really expensive equipment. And basically, what they do is, they take that film, you know, and there's all the individual frames on the film. Most places scan that, they'll project the film and they'll videotape the projection. What this company does is, they do a scan of each frame of that film. And they build a video file from that. So they scan each frame just like it was a negative. And it comes out so clear. There's things in my old 8mm films that I didn't... Detail that I never saw from day one.
You know, I gave... Now, listen, here's a thought here. I gave, I shouldn't say gave, I handed to Ryan Reeves box after box after videotapes. And he was talking about somehow rather doing something with them. Maybe you oughta see what he has and see if we've got a better choice. How he was gonna do it, I don't know. But he may have something very, very crude in mind, which you don't wanna do.
Well, if it's, if it's videotape, I can convert that, you know. That's relatively straightforward. If it's 8mm film, like I say, this outfit in Chandler is the way to go. They're, they're not cheap. It costs money to do that. But I, that was the best decision I ever made with, with my old videotapes or my old 8mm films, my mom's old 8mm films, my grandfather's. So, well, we'll discuss all that stuff eventually. So, to, to the outline. Now, there's some things I know we're missing from here. There's some things if we wanna cut out, we can cut them out. This just proposed. Then we go to the Kentucky Cardinal crash. Now, what I intend on, on doing is, is using... Let me get my... Pull my photos up here. What, what I'd like to do is have you give a very brief description of how you and your sister were enthralled with Lindbergh and Amelia Earhart and how you pretended, you know, you played. And then, the Kentucky Cardinal crash. And I know Chuck has a much more extensive thing in his video. But I'd like to hit that fairly briefly just as the introduction to your experience with aviation.
Okay.
And this will ring a bell with a lot of people there who did exactly the same thing when they were killed.
Paris, in particular, was...
Right. But not to discount anything on that story, but I think we need to move through it fairly quickly. Then, I wanna move to, let's see, I don't have that... That photo is, I've got that in another album here. Then I'd like to move to the Lindbergh photo that you took from your father's shoulders. I had that scanned. Yeah, you're right.
Now, I have another picture there in which my son has superimposed a picture of me when I was six years old with a helmet on. I don't know whether that would be any, of any use or not.
Yeah, we can put that up there because, see, I can scroll through pictures while you're talking. You don't necessarily need to say, "Well, in this picture, this, in this picture, that." You can tell the story and I, I can go through pictures that will match what you're, what you're talking about.
Okay. Well, I can show that if you wanna see it. It's just about, this would be a bit this high. And it's a picture of me with a helmet on, helmet and a jacket.
Okay, so I put that photo back over here. And let's move that up. So that, that's, that's the sequence that that will go in. Then, I'd like you to start talking about Al Williams and how you developed that relationship. And I've got this photo here of, of you with the junior aviators. And the, the Orville Wright photo. And I'd, I'd like to get a, a better quality scan of that. But I've got, I've got one from the, from here. Let's see, let's copy that to that album. So we go, you know, your introduction to Al Williams. The, and again, see, what I have here, Ollie, is on this, this program, these are basically albums of, you know, different groups of photos. These were the photos that I got from Chuck. These are all the photos that I scanned from your, your prints, from your, your albums. So I just need to, I need to move those. But there's, there's this one picture of you repairing the airplane. Yeah.
Yeah.
Let me copy that to...
You can see some of those pictures on the wall, still on the wall.
Yeah. So basically, then, if you can tell a story about how you repaired that model airplane for Al Williams that resulted in you getting this autographed photo.
Right.
Now, we'll get... In, in the case of Orville Wright and Charles Lindbergh, they're gonna pop up more than once in the presentation. It's not like we're going to cover everything about Orville Wright all at once and everything about Charles Lindbergh all at once. But from there, I'd like to talk about Al Williams' racing career.
Okay.
And we'll, you know, we may to some extent, you know, go back and forth on that. And depending on what you have for photos, I may supplement, I may look on the internet and find some pictures of Al Williams and his racer to, to put in.
Yeah, we've got, there's several that I have. And this particular picture was taken on the day that he won the Pulitzer race. And that's the one that Mrs. Williams liked. We'll use that later on. And then, I also have pictures of the Mercury racer that he built at his own expense for the Schneider race and ultimately did not race because it wasn't performing like it should. But I have some good pictures of that. It's a very, very, very unusual racer.
Okay. Okay. Well, we may use this picture twice.
Okay.
You know, here and again later when, when we talk about after your retirement. But we'll, we'll flesh that, the Al Williams racing career out a little bit more with the photos that you have. And if I need to find something on the internet, I'll, I'll do that. And, and as far as that's concerned, you know, you, you talk about what you wanna talk about, about Al Williams' racing career. And I'll just scroll through photos as appropriate while you're talking about that. And I'm, I'm not, I don't have any bullet points underneath that, at least at this point. I mean, like the Al Williams relationship, you know, I want you to talk about the Junior Aviators organization and, and the Orville Wright photograph. So I have those listed specifically as, as a memory jog. I'd also like you to talk about how Al Williams was the first to fly, first American to fly the ME-109.
Right.
And tell what you want to about that. I, I'll try to find a photo that relates to that. But if not, it'll just be part of the, the photos that we use for the Al Williams...
Working right into that, his host was Ernest Udet. And Udet wanted to fly the Gulf Hawk. So Udet flew the Gulf Hawk over Germany and put on a fantastic aerial demonstration. And he says, "Al, do you wanna fly that 109?" And Al flew it as the first American or the first non-German to fly the ME-109. And then, maybe it could be appropriate to introduce the idea that Lindbergh was the second one. But Lindbergh, I mean, Al Williams and then Lindbergh, based on their own personal experiences with not only with the 109, but tours of Europe and seeing all the factories in Europe, in Germany, France, Italy, Spain.
And Al William, you're talking about Al Williams touring these...
You're right. Right. But just sort of mentioning a little bit that Lindbergh, too, was the second one.
Yeah. Yeah. And I'll, I'll make some bullet points on that so we make sure that we cover those.
Now, would that be a good place to bring up the idea that both Lindbergh and Al Williams incurred Franklin Roosevelt's wrath by virtue of their personal relationship and the fact that both of them were on the same boot, the same, the same boat as far as the need for an independent air force, independent of the old Army and the old Navy things. And that's what got Al Williams into trouble with the Navy because of battleship Admiral. There was one incident that Joe Foss related to us is that Admiral King, who I guess was about the top guy in the Air Force or the Navy at that time, insisted, said there were three bad boys in the Navy, Al Williams, Admiral Byrd, and somebody else. And they wanted to go to, they, they had to go to sea. It was his policy that these guys had to go to sea. So they wanted to send Lindbergh or send Al Williams. They wanted to send Al Williams to sea. Admiral Moffett stepped in with Admiral King and says, "He's too valuable to the Navy to send to combat right now." Said, "If he must not be sent to sea, he must work for the Navy in research and development," so on and so on. So that got... That resulted in Williams then having to resign from the Navy. And of course, got Lindbergh pissed off or got Roosevelt pissed off. I lost my turn of thought there. So, anyway, Williams resigned his commission from the Navy, immediately went to the Marine Corps as now is a captain in the Marine Corps. And somewhere along the line, I don't even remember enough the details, but there was a big move underway in Congress to promote Al Williams way up the line. And this was shot down. I don't remember all the details there, but it was actually a major committee hearing that involved moving Al Williams up to a real top spot in the Navy. But he resigned.
Oh, no, that's an excellent place. And that's something you haven't told me about before that I definitely want you to include in this presentation. And I'll make some bullet points on that. And let me do a little research online about what's, what's out there in historical record about that. But, so, but you're saying that Lindbergh and Al Williams wanted an independent air force?
Right.
So, and even, did they want an independent naval air force, independent of the surface Navy?
Yes. They want, they wanted this independent, like the Royal Air Force. They wanted the, the United States Air Force that was independent of the old ties to the battleship Navy and the tank army.
Okay, so essentially, what they were advocating was, what, what existed at the time was the Army and the Navy. And Lindbergh and Williams were advocating an independent Army air force and an independent naval air force.
I think, I have a few, I have a few newspaper clippings that I could dig out very quickly. But I think they were just talking about an independent air force without specifying it was Army or Navy type. Similar to what I think they had in RAF.
So essentially, they, what they were advocating was, you know, I mean, similar to what Billy Mitchell got in trouble for, you know, make, make the air arm of, you know, whatever force, whether it's, you know, whether it's Army or Navy, make it independent of the ground forces.
Right.
Okay.
Right.
No, I think that's a very, a very important historical item to cover, especially with this group.
Okay, now, I can get some newspaper clippings. I think we'll deal with this. I don't know whether you wanna show newspaper clippings or not, but...
Well, newspaper, yeah, I can, I can scan newspaper clippings and, you know, and put that up there. I mean, it's, it's not necessarily everybody's gonna be reading the newspaper line up there.
Just sort of headline or column or something like that, yeah.
Okay. And the value of this right here is that I'm, I'm probably not taking adequate notes, but when I get home, I can go back and I can look at this stuff and remember what we talked about so I can create the, the proper bullet points and research the proper stuff. Okay, no, that's, I, I'm really glad you brought that up, Ollie. That, that is, that's gold there. From that, you know, well, to kinda wrap up the pre-war, you know, pre-war and transition to wartime, then I'd, I'd like you to talk about how Al Williams suggested that you have an engineering career and how that then morphed into a flying career.
Right.
And, and then, which would lead to your pilot training. And that, if you could, you know, we can go through, I've got photos here of you in training. And you got somebody at your door.
Hello? Come in. Hello?
Hi.
I'll bet there's water again.
Yes.
Just put it down here, if you would, please.
I will. And I'll be right back to fix your bed, okay?
Okay.
Cheers. Just found them on the floor.
Oh, thank you.
You're welcome.
I don't know what that is. I don't know where it came from.
Soft wraps. It looks like something for...
Oh, I know. That was off my, my seatbelt.
Oh, okay. All right.
That probably just fell off my, fell off my walker there.
As far as pilot training, then, and I can, I can fill that in a little bit more about the, you know, 'cause I can get that off Chuck's video, but...
This might be a good time to mention, in connection with training, that Al Williams went to Hap Arnold and offered what he could do to support the war effort, including turning his own Gulf Hawks over to the government if they wanted to use it for military purposes. And Hap Arnold said, "No, what I would rather you would do, Al, is go around to the military bases, Air Force and Navy, and show these kids how precision flying is important and particularly the dive bombing techniques that he developed." And he did visit the bases and put on these demonstrations.
Which, you know, and that is an excellent point. And that's, that's actually reminiscent of what Bob Hoover did in the Korean War.
Right. Exactly. Exactly.
And what Charles Lindbergh did.
Exactly. Exactly.
Okay, we'll flesh that out a little bit. You know, I, I don't wanna spend a lot of time on your training. What I wanna, because I wanna be able to devote time to the things that you, that are really unique to your career.
Okay.
And the, the training, while it's, it's certainly is interesting, you know, you can just say, "Well, I trained in this aircraft at that base and this aircraft at another base." And wound up at, if you could basically just tick off how you wound up at Buckley, kind of by mistake. Not by mistake, but you know what I'm talking about. You wound up at Buckley, which then brings us to the flight to South America. Now, how you, how you handle that, that, the tail number of the B-26 in the video with Chuck, if you could basically do the same thing and just note the tail number when we put it up there and just tell people that that tail number will resurface later in the presentation. And we'll leave the whole do little connection until later, okay? And we'll leave the whole Doolittle connection until later, okay?
There you go, that's, that's a good point.
So, I'd like you to touch on the bases that you were at, and I'll, I'll create a map that shows where things were. I mean, I'll have a whole map of South America, but I would like you to talk about how you, you know, the areas that you, that you operated in.
Okay.
And the fact that you did go, you know, almost all the way down to the very tip of, of South America in your photo mapping. We'll, you know, talk about the volcano photo, we'll have that up there. The, the swoos, the B-17 over Rio, and if you could just mention that you were transitioning and, you know, so you had B-17s there at the time.
Right.
And then to the, well, other things to the, you know, I'll, I'll have in here the photo of the gentleman that flew with you, and you can mention that you always had to have someone.
Oh, yeah, you, you manage.
Right. We'll, we'll, we'll get back, we'll coordinate photos here in a little bit, let's, let's just, let's try to focus a little bit more on topics. And then finally winding up with the hard landing that, that left you, you know, babysitting that B-25 and being able to fly a bunch of other airplanes.
And setting up the arrangements for the, for the B-17 now equipped now squadron to move down to Palomar, to Howard Field. It was part of my job there to go over to Howard Field and to get everything set up for the squadron. When they got their B-17s to come down and be based at Howard Field instead of Albrook.
Okay.
It was no big point, but it was, it was part of the exercise.
Okay, then, your reassignment back to the States that ultimately resulted in you meeting General Carroll through the, the things that you, that you went to.
That's good.
Then, once we have General Carroll introduced into the storyline, you can mention that General Carroll was the second person to fly the P-59, and who was the first?
The first was General Criggy. Criggy was actually deputy to General Carroll. But Carroll was tied up on something else, so he told Larry to go ahead and fly the first one.
Okay, and, and how you spell this guy's name?
Criggy, C-R-A-I, Criggy, C-R-A-I-G-I-E, I think it was Criggy.
And were they both generals when they flew the airplane?
Yes, at that time, at that time Carroll was a brigadier general. And Criggy was neither a colonel or a brigadier general at that time, ultimately Criggy became a three-star general, although Carroll was only two-star. But at that time, certainly Carroll was at least a brigadier general.
Yeah, and obviously, I mean, they were the first Army pilots to fly the airplane, because the battle test pilots had.
That's right, that's right.
Okay, then, you know, after we kind of get General Carroll and who he is in the war effort introduced, then I thought we should, we would move to Lindbergh's activity in World War II.
Okay, now back up here on General Carroll, he was, at the time I got there, he was a commandant of the Air Force Institute of Technology, the brand-new Air Force Institute of Technology, which trained all the, most of the astronauts and almost all the top generals are graduates of the Air Force Institute of Technology.
Okay. So, at, at, at that point, at, at that point, you might mention that you, you know, when, when we bring General Carroll into the narrative, you know, his position, his function in the war, his involvement with the P-59, and you might mention at that point that you were engaged to his daughter.
I could do that. Now, right there, I have a good picture of a group of generals that greeted us as a first-class at Affitt, and in that picture is General Chidlaw, four-star general, General Aker, R.A. Aker, General Twining, General Carroll, General Criggy, so it's a good, I don't think we even have it in there. But they're all lined up, there are those five or six generals, most of them I knew were pretty popular names. But Chidlaw, Carroll, Aker, of course, he was commander of the Eighth Air Force.
I thought I scanned one like that.
I can get it very quickly if you don't have it here. There it is.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So this is Chidlaw, he was commander.
Okay, for the video from the left, it's, how do you spell his name?
Chidlaw, C-H-I-D-L-A-W, Chidlaw, he was commander of the Air Material Command.
Okay.
This is Criggy, Lawrence Criggy.
Lawrence?
Lawrence Criggy, yeah. Criggy.
Okay.
Franklin O. Carroll, he was a brigadier at the time. And this is General Twining, Nathan Twining, he was the, became the first Air Force officer to be chairman of the Joint Chiefs of Staff. And this is our General Aker, who got his fourth star along with Doolittle.
And you wound up with his book.
Right, right, and interestingly enough, they were lined up to get their fourth star pinned on them. And they had General Aker, no, they had Doolittle lined up first, with Aker behind him, he says, no, no. He said, Aker was senior to me during the war, he should go first. So Aker was the first one to get the fourth star, and then they pinned it on Doolittle. And I have a picture somewhere of Very Goldwater and Frithen Reagan, I think, pinning Doolittle's fourth star on him. We can probably drag that out if you want it.
Yeah, uh, let's see, I, oh, wait, I here, oops, I was just making a copy of that.
So Criggy would be the first one to fly the P-59, first military guy.
Okay, well, we're in, uh, we're, I'll just stick that there.
And you know, when we're, when we get a video of this, I'm going to send a copy of it to Criggy's daughter and to Franklin Carroll.
Sure. Ollie, I still, that, that is one of my all-time favorite photos.
Really?
I just, I just like that photo.
Well, I do too, and the fact that they've, I had an enlisted man flying copilot with me. Now, he was not a pilot, but he was an engineer, shorty, and a damn good engineer, grand good flight engineer.
I mean, th- this is a photo of reality, that's how it was.
Another piece of reality is the flight compass was calibrated in one degree increments.
I mean, th- this photo's definitely going up on the.
Okay, and there's a torpedo button on here too.
Okay, back to the outline then, okay, we've got that photo, so transitioning to to, you know, I don't know how we want to work Lindbergh in, but the things that I'd like you to talk about for sure about Lindbergh is, you know, his P-38 experiences, which we talked about some the other day. I, I'd like you to bring up, and I forgot the guy's name that had the longest single engine.
Oh, gosh, Forster, Joe Forster.
Yeah.
Now, you see, he flew, actually, when he went to the Pacific, he flew with Joe Foss first. Because first.
Well, he flew with Joe, Joe Forster first?
No, Joe, Joe Foss.
Oh, really?
Joe Foss flew with.
Lindbergh flew with Joe Foss first?
Lindbergh flew with Foss first, that's right.
Okay, and Corsairs?
In Corsairs. Then, after teaching the Corsairs how to fly, because he flew, see, he'd, when he first met Joe Foss, Joe Foss said, he said to Joe, he said, I'd sure like to meet you in the Pacific and fly Tallin Charlie with you. He said, what'd you call him, Charlie? He said, Charlie? No good guy flies Tallin Charlie with me, he says, you're going to fly combat. So then after he flew combat in Corsairs, he then went over to the P-38s. And that's when Forster says, who's that lanky guy with there with no rank on him? So that's Mr. Lindbergh.
And, and of course, you got this directly from Joe Foss.
And, and Forster.
Well, but what I'm saying is that the Corsair portion is, you got that from Joe Foss directly.
Right.
So, I.
And of course, it's recorded in his book too.
Yeah, but I mean, as far as your recollection of it.
Right.
And, and I don't know when we should introduce Joe Foss, except that I have him on the next page as a part of the, you know, as later on, you know, in the area of when you discovered the Historical Society and the people. But I, I have the Knights of the Round Engine Table.
Good.
And we'll, we'll put that picture up there, but I don't want to flash forward from World War II, so if you could tell the Joe Foss thing, well, let me ask you, let me ask you this before we talk about sequence of things. When did the Cat Incident happen with, with Lindbergh? Was that before or after he was overseas?
The Cat Incident was, oh, that would have been probably in nineteen forty-seven or so, so that was in forty-seven.
Okay, so that was after, that was after his wartime experiences.
Yes, yes, because that's when Kay was out at St. Louis, and I was at Stanford, and I picked her up and drove her, drove her back to Carroll's. They had a hurry if we have a guest for dinner.
Okay, so what was General Carroll's connection with Charles Lindbergh during wartime? Or was there?
Well, I think, because they were old friends, I think Lindbergh, now, this is, I'd have to check this Frank with Carroll. I'd check this with Frank, I think Lindbergh, right after he got back from Paris, escorted Lindbergh around Bowling Field when he visited Washington. I'll double-check that, I think that's, I think that's where they first got connected.
Okay.
I'll double-check that.
Yeah, and that's something that if you can just find that out and get that straight before the presentation, it doesn't affect, it doesn't affect photos or the order that we do anything, but I, but I, but I would like to tie General Carroll to Charles Lindbergh.
Right.
You know, to make that transition to then, to then be able to talk about Lindbergh's experiences and.
Okay, I'll, I'll check that out.
Yeah.
Because they were definitely old friends. And of course, when you go through, you have the wartime journals of Charles Lindbergh, haven't you?
No, I don't.
Now, that's, that's a good book, so wartime journals of Charles Lindbergh, and he spent much, much time at Wright Field. And he doesn't mention General Carroll specifically, but he does mention the other top people at Wright Field, and.
Well, check with Frank and, and see.
I'll do that, I'll do that.
And, you know, and if you want to mention, whatever you find out, if you want to mention that you, you know, that you, you know, in preparation for the, you know, for this presentation, that you double-checked with his grandson Frank about, you know, what their initial connection was. But, but anyway, if we can bring in, you know, and I'll add the bullet points for the Corsair, you know, then the P-38, and I'll, I'll insert.
Would this be a good place to introduce the fact that Frank is in the process of becoming a hereditary member of the Didalians?
Uh, yeah, you can mention that.
You all know that the, the original pilots in World War I are all original Didalians. And then the, his, their lineal descendants are eligible for hereditary.
Yeah, and.
Would that be a?
Yeah, and that, that would be a good place to, to put that in, because, I mean, that, that shows the whole connection, and we'll, we'll mention that, that General Carroll was was member number forty-eight in the Didalians, and I'll put that in.
Yeah, okay.
Now, you had made mention of the, the relationship between Henry Ford and Charles Lindbergh, and Lindbergh's influence on Ford as far as wartime production.
Okay.
And I'd like you to talk about that, because I think that's a part of history that I was really not aware of myself.
The first B-24 that I flew, before I even got out of flying school, I went over from basic training to Maxwell Field to get a ride to B-24 made by Ford.
Speaking of B-24s, I, I am reviewing the video with Chuck, you talked about coming back, when you came back from South America, that originally you were going to be trained in the F, I believe the F-7 was the, yeah, the F-7 was the B-24 photo ship. Did you actually check out in that?
I did, I checked out in that up at Buckley Field, and I had first flown it in South America, because I was a good friend of the guys that flew B-17s, or B-24s. And so I checked their guys out in B-25s, and they didn't give me a full checkout, but I flew the B-24 quite a bit. So I didn't want to have anything to do with it.
Okay, and then, but, but then you, you did a more formal checkout in Buckley. Okay, yeah, and I, I'd like you to mention that, and I'll put a bullet point about that up there.
Okay.
And, and this just, this just goes to your background and experience, so that they've got an idea of, of what you've done. We'll, we'll put the, the Lindbergh and the Cat to the last part of this, because that was the last thing, but I just think that's a funny story, Ollie, and it's just, as much as possible, I, I want to, I, I want you to tell the personal touch.
Okay.
Things, and that's, that's the kind of stuff that, to me, is, really fills in, because we can read about.
Well, do you want to see a picture up here on the wall, on the corner wall, about the third one down? Picture called Young Lovers. There's a picture of Kay and me back in Pittsburgh, and that's the one that Frank took a picture of yesterday, he wants it to send.
We definitely need to put a picture of you and, and Kay, that picture. We definitely need to include that in the presentation. Okay, I, I love that, I love that part of it, Ollie. Okay, then, I'd like you to tell the inside story of High Flight.
Okay, I can do that.
And we don't need to, we don't need to go over any, any more than that, except that you know the story, you tell the story, I'll have, I'll get whatever from you that we can project up at the time.
You want a picture of the book? I think, do you have the book, or does, Arv Scholz has it now? But it's just a picture of the Rape of Nanking, is the title of the book.
Yeah. It's, we'll, we'll make do with what we've got.
Okay.
But, but I'd like you to cover that, because that's, there's. But, but I'd like you to cover that, because that's, there's, there's elements of that that aren't really.
Well, like, one key to that, of course, is why did we not declare war on Japan in nineteen thirty seven? When they sank a US Navy ship on the Yangtze River that was evacuating noncombatants from Nanking. On the Yangtze River in, in a Navy, US Navy gunboat. And it was sunk by Japanese fighter planes. Twin engine torpedo planes have sank that boat. And that's one thing I'm gonna go to Wikipedia or something and say, why, why? I'd like to see the background. I haven't even researched this congressional record. But I'm sure there must have been all kinds of debate over what we do. Since Japan has committed an act of war sinking a US Navy vessel, why didn't we not declare war on the bastards then?
Well, anytime you wanna add live and add something in the presentation like that, feel free to do it.
Okay, I'd, I'd like to really find out about that, you know, just see what. What there was in the congressional record.
Okay, well, you work on that and, uh, now, when was Orville Wright's last flight?
Orville Wright's last flight, and I have an eight minute video of that, that would have been.
Of you discussing that of, or?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I have, I have a video of it, which I'll be glad to show you. It's right on my computer.
Okay.
It's about an eight minute flight, and talked to Frank in detail about that last night. And, uh, Orville Wright was always invited out to Wright Field to see the latest. So he came out, General Carroll wanted him to see the C sixty nine, I think it was the first, first constellation.
And when, when was this?
There's a, on the video, it gives a date. I think it was nineteen fifty five.
Okay.
And it shows pictures of Orville Wright boarding the airplane with General Carroll. And then, and here's where the story becomes different depending on whose version of it you get. But anyway, to make a long story short, somewhere in the flight, Orville Wright is at the controls of the C sixty nine. And he made his comment was that, no, this was another phase section. Anyway, he was just amazed that. They had all these things in the airplane. And later on, Kay Carroll called me and says, Dad wants to meet you at the, on the flight line at noon. And that's when he opened the door for Orville Wright, and we had the, the YB fifth, YB forty nine flew over. From Washington.
Okay, um, well, on the next page, I have, the next thing that's listed is. The Von Karman story.
Right.
And I'm gonna put a question mark after that about exactly what we do, pending what you find out. Of Frank.
And he, he definitely talked to Von Karman, and they met at the hotel, and that's when Von Karman, Von Karman gave him a go. So the only thing that's really questionable is what was that envelope that I looked at? And Frank's recollection was that Von Karman sent him a copy of Einstein's Letter to Roosevelt. My recollection was that it was Von Karman's notes to him on the supersonic transport, but that's. Really is sort of an, almost an immaterial thing, it doesn't have to be.
Yeah.
Could mention, I could mention the, he had this note from Von Karman.
And when did that take place? That, that was, that was before the war?
Well, no, that would have been after the war, that would have been in the, you know, before the supersonic transport flew, which was probably forty.
Well, find out, find out from Frank when it happened.
I will.
And we'll, we may adjust where we.
Okay.
Include that.
Okay.
Then, uh, one thing I didn't put in here, which we should probably include, is your, uh. Your Garrett, your time at Garrett.
Oh, okay.
Which I think should go in right here, and I'll, I'll add that there.
That's right.
But, well, there could be a lot to say there. I think if we, for, in the interest of time, we, we stick to the story of the three generals.
Right.
And we'll, we'll have that picture.
Okay, good.
Then we go to your retirement era and how you got involved in the, in the A A H S.
Right, okay.
And, you know, be sure and say that it was founded by General Doolittle.
Right.
So forth, cause.
Absolutely.
Because that, that will lend the credibility to these guys.
Right.
Then, um, talk about how you met Joe Foss. Your experience with your son Jeff at Cactus High School, you know, the things that he did. Your Knights of, of the Round Engine Table, which, um, there's, um, uh. I, I have a photo that scanned of that that we can use, that shows you and Joe Foss. Um, your association with the Wasp that you met, and I've got photos of, of that. And then, if you could talk about your, um, your association with the QBs. And the fact that Ernst Udet is a member of QBs.
Right.
So.
Yeah.
From there, then I'd like to go to Lindbergh's grave. And you tell the story about how you searched for Lindbergh's grave. And serendipitously wound up meeting the guy who buried him.
Right.
And we've got photos here that we can use, we'll, we'll go through that. Then. I'd like you to go into how you discovered that your airplane from South America. Was the airplane in the Air Force Museum.
That's good. Cause I wind up, not only was that airplane, it's in the museum, how did it get to the museum?
Right, and that whole story, including, you know, and what you, you told in, in Chuck's video. About the airplane being taxied up Las Vegas Boulevard. And I'd like you to, and I'll, I'll bullet point some of those things under there. But, but then. You know, your discovery of that, which then led you to your association with the, the Doolittle Raiders.
That's right.
And, and I would like to then end the presentation with, with your. Your association with the Doolittle Raiders.
Now, I have a nice model, Jeff has it right now, of my airplane. As it looked when I flew it, with the insignia of the ninety first on it. And then I have it autographed by a very famous pilot, who was one of the legends out of Confederate Air Force.
Are you talking about the model?
It's a model, yeah.
Yeah, uh, there's.
I don't know if I have that in here or not.
There's, uh, there is a picture of.
Yeah, that's it.
Okay, so, and this, this is the tail number through, uh, three, 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 seven, four?
Yeah.
That's the one that's in there?
Right, three, three, seven, four.
So my question was, uh, you know, one of my questions was. Let's see. When you left Buckley, it, it had, uh, an OD paint scheme. Maybe it's in this.
It did.
And when it, uh. When you're. Yeah, yeah.
Okay, the first thing they did down in Panama, down in Tulara Peru, was skin the OD out.
Okay, why did they do that?
Because we were, the terrain we were flying over was everything under the sun. Well, they thought if it was skin, if it was down to skin color, aluminum color, it would be more. More, uh, more visible. If it went down to the jungle.
Okay, so you weren't, you, the, the bottom line is that it was because you weren't worried about combat camouflage. You were worried about visibility.
Right.
Rescue.
Right.
Okay, got it. So, um, that answers, that answers one of my questions. Now, are. What do you think about, you know, this general flow of things?
Well, I think it's wonderful, Dick.
And is there something else that you wanna add in anything that, um. Or, or is there something else that you, you wanna? You wanna omit for any reason?
We haven't talked here about the time that I spent in the Secretary of Defense's office. But that's not terribly.
We could, we could do a, um, a mention of that. I, I mean, and, and in no way am I meaning that we're, we wanna give that short shrift. But, um, you know, what's, what's the most important? Stories that would be good to get out to these guys?
Well. Let's see, I was. First, I told the kids, they weren't know what I did in the Pentagon. That I played second fiddle in McNamara's band.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, with, among, among the things that I got involved in, and this is detail that we don't need to talk about there. But the, the thing that had happened is that the various congressional hearings, they got into the question of rates of data. And multiple sources versus sole sources for, by same airplanes. And say, well, here, you know, we finally developed an airplane built by the Douglas Company. And then you went ahead and you made some other contractors start building the same airplanes. Why did you do that? Or, why did you not do that? Why did you go back to the same company to build the same airplane that they'd already invented? Why didn't you go public? The answer to that always, we did not have adequate technical data. What do you mean, technical data? So then this gets into a whole big series of battles back and forth. Between the Department of Defense and Congress with rights and data. Who has the rights to the data? And, uh, why do you not have the data that you need to go competitive? Why can't you just take the desire that the first guy came up with and then throw it to the market and let anybody build it? Well, General Mark Bradley was one of the guys. That was the forerunner on this term of technical data. He's the one that was my father for the Garrett Corporation later on. But anyway, it finally got to the point that. McNamara appointed an Army Signal Corps General. As the Director of Technical Data and Standardization Policy. And that was this Army General, and then I came in and I became his deputy. And that was the best relationship I've ever sustained between a commander and a deputy. Because he said, Ole, he says, you're the fly boy. I will take care of the politics, you run the office, you select the personnel, you decide the organization. You recommend what the policies will be, and I'll be the guy that'll fight with Congress. And he would come back sometimes in uniform, just mad as hell, said, that son of a bitch from Pennsylvania. Called me up to his office one day, and he wanted to talk, nice friendly guys. Then a bunch of Pennsylvania people goes down, and he takes off on me like a cat would be taking off after a mouse. He said, to his people, he said, he said, you know, you take people like this general here, they all do these old goddamn stupid things and. Financially, I said, okay, Stan, I'm sorry about that, but let's go to lunch. He says, thank you, Mr. Flood, I don't think so, I'm busy. Said, miserable bastard. So anyway, it worked out real fine. I ran the office and he ran the policy thing. And, uh, anyway. We got to the point when there was a big argument over technical data on supersonic aircraft. And it started out by our seeing a movie of President Lyndon Johnson with his arms around. McNamara and Bozo McKee, General Bozo McKee, who was the Chief of the Federal Aviation Agency. Over whom the supersonic transport development in this country was run. So the finally. Johnson says to McNamara, says, now, I understand from Bozo here. That the thing that you need to develop the supersonic transport for this country. Is everything that the Defense Department already knows about supersonic flight. And he says, now, Bob, he says, are you gonna assure that we can get that from the Department of Defense? Yes, sir, Mr. President. So then the thing comes over to us. And I got the job, I want you to write a letter to the heads of all companies that have supersonic experience. This was, oh, and it said, and we want a meeting in my office. And I want you, the President, one of these went to Dan Houghton, who was President of, of Lockheed. And bring with you your top technical man, that meant Kelly Johnson. So Houghton shows up with Kelly Johnson, the head of Convair shows up with his technical people, North American engine companies. And it turned out McNamara was out on business, and Cyrus Vance, who was the Deputy Secretary of Defense. Called a meeting, and we got down there and General Stan, my boss. Now became the Chair of that meeting. Now, the Chiefs of the Services are supposed to be there, and somebody says, where's General May? Stan says, get General May. O may. Yes, sir. I get on the phone, I said, sorry, I talked to General May's secretary, and the general is tied up in the Pentagon. With so and so, he will be unable to send, but he will send the Vice Chief of Staff of the Air Force. So General Ferguson, General Jim Ferguson, who's the Assistant Secretary of Defense. Or Assistant Chief of Staff of the Air Force for Research Development, shows up, fine old gentleman. But anyway, the Chief of Staff of the Army and everybody in the CIA is there. And everybody's talking about the North American people, talking about all their rates and data, they know all about the V seventy bomber. But they'll be goddamned if they're gonna give that to Lockheed as a competitor for the supersonic transport. So it finally gets down to the point that General McKee. Who had been the commander of the Air Force Logistics Command, he's now the head of Federal Aviation Agency. Says, gentlemen, I have to be at the White House in half an hour. Shall I tell the President that Secretary McNamara has decreed that the Department of Defense contractors. With supersonic experience will make available their data to the supersonic transport contractors. And engine contractors, or should I tell them that somebody's dragging their feet? Of course, he was looking right now at General Dynamics and Lockheed. Everybody says. Okay, so thank you, gentlemen, the meeting is over. Oh, no, one more thing. He says, I will name so and so as my focal point for any problems that are arising. General Stan, who will be the Department of Defense focal point, he says, Ole Griffiths. So I wind up, oh shit, what do I gotta go in here? So, it was, it turned out that of course CIA controlled everything on the B cell or the.
The B one.
The B one.
Fortunately. CIA did.
Well, because the CIA controlled the supersonic flights. The supersonic aircraft that we had was under supersonic, under FAA, under FAA or CIA control.
Why was it under CIA control?
Well, there was, see, there was a big, there was a big discussion about. Who was gonna be responsible for nuclear weapons after the war? Was it gonna be the Air Force or this yet to be developed Atomic Energy Commission? The decision was, we didn't wanna keep it in the Department of Defense. So that's why, when the EPA was set up, they decided that the energy side of the house would control the secret weapons. In the meantime, I was one of the Air Force guys that was sent to Las Vegas, to, to, to Albuquerque. To get the first briefing on atomic weapons, which of course was peanuts what we got. But anyway, the decision was made that the Air Force will not control atomic weapons. So that, that got me out of that business. And so now I'm in this other business on the CIA, with the CIA. Because the, uh, in order for them to take any information on the SR seventy one. And give it to the contractors for the supersonic transport, which basically were down Lockheed, Boeing and North American. It had to have CIA approval. And CIA, so they were, they would be damned if they would give anything to Lockheed on. What the SR seventy one was like, or any of the others. So anyway.
Well, but this was, but Lockheed already had that information on the SR seventy.
On the SR seventy one, they did.
Yeah, but.
But they did, but the, the question was, did they have it so that they could openly show it? To the two contractors for the supersonic transport.
Oh, so the CIA didn't. Oh, so the CIA didn't want to give Lockheed approval to share it?
That's right, that's right. So anyway, the thing, the way the fine thing, the way the thing finally shut down, there were a few relatively minor incidents. And I talked to Howell, Bob Howell, it's EAA, and they talked to CIA, and said, NASA would let them have that. So anyway, fortunately, they canceled, overseas they canceled the supersonic transport program.
So your headache went away.
The problem went away.
Uh, wow, that is, uh, that's a whole area of, uh, of pursuit. Ole, you, you keep opening a lot of doors here, so.
That's what I don't wanna talk about.
Well, what timeframe were you?
I went there in, uh, hello?
Hi, Ole, I have your pharmacy on the phone.
My pharmacy?
Yes, and I'm trying to...
Express scripts?
Yeah, I'm trying to change your address for you. Oh, yeah, so you, I'm sorry, what am I doing? You need to talk to them and tell them it's okay for me to change your address.
Okay, this is Ole Griffiths. Yes, uh-huh, I know you well. Yes, May 22nd, 1921.
Thank you, sir, and would you please confirm the, uh, the code that we currently have on file for you?
The code that you have on file?
The zip code.
Zip code?
It's eight-five-zero-two-one.
Eight-five-zero-two-one.
All right, thank you very much, sir. Um, I just needed to speak with you because I'm speaking with Mary Ann, your mistress, and Greg.
Very lovely lady.
Very good, sir. Um, I, she was wanting to make an address update, and I may need to get your permission to be able to make that address change. Mary Ann, I have her permission to make the address change, thank you.
Absolutely, absolutely, I continue to deal with you folks, and it should come to my new address, which she'll give you.
Wonderful, thank you very much, sir.
I will, and thank you for your continued great service.
Thank you, Ole.
You're welcome. Now, are you good on computers?
I'd like to say I am, but I don't know, I, I could come back and look at it if you want me to.
Okay.
All right, I'll be back in a little bit.
What do you need looking at? No, I was just.
I'm sorry, okay, I'm here.
There was a lot of things that he dealt with.
Okay, you, you were the Secretary of Defense for what time period?
Uh, let's see. I can double-check that, it was about... I'll go back and check, I'll have to go back and check that for you.
What can?
Up there about, I think I was up there for four and a half years.
But what time, what, what era was that, was that?
It ended in seventy when I retired, because I went back to Andrews for one tour, one short tour of duty. So probably it was until sixty-eight, probably till about sixty-eight, probably say from sixty-four to sixty-eight, roughly, roughly in that period.
Okay.
And I was the Deputy Secretary, and then I was, oh, I was Director, I was a Deputy Director, then for a while I was Director. And then when I was getting ready to retire, they put me down to Deputy Director when they brought an Admiral in. So there I took the place of a Major General, I was replaced by an Admiral. Did I get promoted? Hell, no.
Okay, you were Deputy Director, then Director of, what was the rest of your time?
The Office of Technical Data and Standardization Policy. So it was standardization, this was standardization in the usual sense. Like McNamara would say, why the hell do the Army, Navy, and Marines have different aprons? I want a display, set up the aprons. So they set up Army, Navy, Air Force, and Marine, aprons. He turned his back and he went down the line, I want that one, so that'll be standard for all the services. Then, oh, the other one was on, why do the Army, Navy, Air Force, and Marines all have different belt buckles? The Army's got brass belt buckles, the Navy's got brass buckles, pretty much the same, that's good. The Air Force got aluminum buckles, the Marines have got black buckles with a Marine emblem on them, why can't they all wear the same thing? So after I did it on the job for about four months, I wrote him a letter. Said, Mr. Secretary, we have spent four million dollars trying to find a luxurious black finish for the Marine buckle. And we've struck out. My suggestion is that we leave belt buckles as they are. Comes back, okay. And I says, you've lost your ass. And he, I said, I don't give a shit, this is the dumbest thing I ever had into. So we still have our own belt buckles now.
All I can say is, wow, Ole, I, I mean, this, this whole thing when you were with the Secretary of Defense is all... I mean, that's a whole other area of, uh, of discussion and stories that, uh, you know, we need to talk about that.
I don't think this is the time.
Yeah.
There was a good, good friend of mine was a Navy captain, and he was in charge of food research. And I asked him to come to a meeting on some other subject. Says, I am so goddamn pissed off, he says, McNamara, or no, Rose Johnson, has got a letter from the American Black Bean Society, because we didn't ship enough black beans to Vietnam. He says, I had to find out how many tons of black beans we shipped to Vietnam last year. And I said, I think I have problems.
Okay, uh, so how are you with ending it on the, uh, you know, with discussing the Doolit Raiders and your, your experiences with their reunions?
I think I could do that fine, that's been one of the most wonderful experiences of my life. Particularly the, the way I met Doolittle, was when I got a call from General Bradley, because I had, we were building, we had designed and built the secondary power system for the B-1. And General Bradley called me one day and said, Ole, how's that program going? General, we're pleasing General Bradley with it. He says, when's the first run? I said, next Thursday. He said, I'll be there with two buddies. And I said, General, if you'll tell me your buddies' names, I'll make sure we have passes. He says, how about Kurt Lame and Jimmy Doolittle? I said, I think we could let them in.
Okay, um, I'm gonna revise this, if you, you can keep that copy there for your reference, but bear in mind that that's just, that's just the first draft, and I've got a lot of changes here that I've noted. What I'd like to do now is, is go through some of these photos, um, and I, I scanned, I scanned everything in your photo albums, I didn't bring the photo albums back, because I wanna take those for the, you know, for people to thumb through at the, at the event. But I'd like to go through, and I've got a few questions I wanna ask about some things. And then after that, um, I wanna talk about some of these photos that are up on your wall, and we'll decide which ones I'm gonna take and, and do some copying and so forth. And I wanna keep an eye here on, I've got forty-two minutes of battery power, I don't wanna run into what we did that time before when we lost the, uh, the video file, because I let the battery go dead. I'll change the battery before we get to that point. Let me just, uh, some of these things, I'm just gonna, uh, if, if I know what they are, uh, then I'm just gonna, I'm gonna pass through.
Excuse me, making a back list, but I don't know the question, the name will come up or not, but it's pronounced My Happy Ass.
No, I, and I want you to tell that story about how the plane got its name, uh, about My Aiken Ass and My Happy Ass.
Yeah, okay.
So...
I think that's a unique picture, because it's one of the few pictures that really shows the three cameras, and leads into that picture.
Oh, uh, this one here, yeah, oh, yeah, we're definitely gonna show that. And, but this, this was, uh, this was My Aiken Ass, you said?
I think so, yeah.
Because, because of this, uh...
Right.
Okay, uh, swoosh. Probably gonna leave out the F-101 stuff, just for brevity.
Okay.
But, um, but Folsberg was where this airplane met its demise. So it was the same one that you were talking about, you, you said there was an incident.
I'd like to have that article or anything you have on it.
We'll put some of these in, um, we don't necessarily need to talk about these, because everybody knows what the, what the, uh, the raid was. Now, who is this guy here?
This is Captain Heamanus.
Okay, this is, I wanna make sure, I think we can see it on there, that's who I thought it was, and I've got his name, uh, but I wanted to make sure that that's who it was. And was there a particular reason this photo was?
Well, yeah, when we went down there, we were supposedly based at the Chilean Air Force Base. And it was pretty muddy, so we picked one guy, Peyton Jacobsen, do it and shoot a landing there. He gave us don't land errors, there's two muddies that I just barely stopped. So I said, go over to the civilian airport. So this was the civilian airport, which was basically Pan American Grace. But we went in there, and we had a nice breakfast of, uh, bifteca la pulpa, poor man's beef steak, hamburgers. And anyway, so that then became our base, and we worked out a deal with Pan American Airways so that we could put up a couple of tents on their property. And those two tents was our headquarters down there.
Okay, so you basically operated out of Pan Am's facility when you were in Chile?
That's right.
Okay.
And Pan Am actually, no, no great deal, except they just let us put a dance up there.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
And even, just as a matter of fact, we were so short of manpower down there that officers stood guard duty along with enlisted men. Well, this one, by the way, is, no, just that one.
That's in, that's in the Air Force Museum.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, and I, I'm, yeah.
Those are the last two WASPs.
Right, and we'll include this photo up here where we talk about WASPs.
That's good, by the way, they both had that gold medal, they both, uh, they're, they're holding it there. Anyway, they both got a gigantic gold medal, all of them.
It looks like it's there and it's out of the picture.
Yeah.
Okay, um, so, uh, oh, that was more. Is there anything?
No, this is part, part of the deal in Japan.
Okay.
We were hosted by, uh, the American military there and the Japanese military, the Jazz Death, Japanese Air Self-Defense Force.
Yeah.
And, uh, we had joint, joint meals, and, uh, we went to a typical Japanese restaurant, and the geisha girls were part, was part of the deal, they poured the wine for us, and that was about it. Danced a little bit, maybe.
Okay, who are these people?
Okay, this is Jimmy Mattern.
Okay, this is, uh, this is the photo of Amelia Earhart.
Right, right, and this is from Jimmy's collection. Now, I have the original photo, and here's Amelia Earhart's signature. Says to Jimmy from Amelia Earhart, but her name is an ink, and the ink is sort of worn out.
Yeah.
But this is Jimmy Mattern, and I think Amelia's sitting in there, that's probably Amelia Earhart.
Yeah, right there.
And probably Fred Noonan, who was her navigator, is one of the others. And that was taken somewhere along the line, I just don't know where. But that was in Jimmy's collection.
All right.
Obviously, that was before she took off on her plane.
Yeah, uh, what is the background of this?
Okay, there's another picture, it shows two F-4s in formation. It was called the Battle of Early, the Cho and Li Incident. This guy was one of the top test pilots at Edwards Air Force Base, and his name is, I think, Ed, oh, Dawn, Dawn, uh, it'll come to me later on. But that's just a picture of him flying this early U-2. Now, the story was, I was called one day by a friend, we were going to a meeting of the Knights of the Round Engine Table, and he said, when you go to the meet, when you come to the meeting, we're gonna movie camera. So at the movie camera was Roger Parrish, who was twice leader of the Thunderbirds.
Yeah, and...
And this guy, who was a pilot of the U-2. And I think I told you that story in the incident.
Right, about, about the F-4 in Vietnam, yeah. This, Dan looks like A, A-O-R-L-I-E, A?
Dan Early.
Dan.
It's something like that, I can get the spelling of it.
Okay.
And who's the Bob?
Looks like Reidman, something like, but this is...
Might be Bob Pricey.
No.
Could that be?
No, it wouldn't be him. Uh, but this isn't something that's relevant to, to what we're trying to...
That's right, you're right, it is not.
Uh, I mean, but, but I would like to track down for, you know, historical purposes. Uh, this, it, I mean, this is a B-10, but, uh, it doesn't, uh, doesn't fit.
It's just, it's just part of the massive collection of pictures that I have from him.
Okay, um, and this is, and I'd like to include this in, uh, in the story, just as part of the South American stuff. And, oh, that sentimental journey.
This is the flyover at one of the Doolit Raiders reunions.
Okay, um, who is this?
That is my great-grandson.
Okay.
Whose father and grandfather are Southwest captains.
Okay.
And whose great-grandfather is a, or grandfather, whatever I am, is, is me.
So he, he's a, he's a grandson or a great-grandson?
He would be a great-grandson, yes.
Okay, um, what's this event here?
That was at Fort Belvoir, that's probably on the first roll of color pictures, colors, coat of crumbs I ever took. It would be probably in June of nineteen forty-two, June or July of nineteen forty-two. That is Jimmy Dorsey's band, and this is, uh, I'll think of her name shortly, one of the very famous singers of those days. I have it in my computer somewhere, but I think this is Jimmy Dorsey, or that's Jimmy Dorsey. I think it's a, oh, there's a, there's a JD, Jimmy Dorsey on the band.
I'll probably research and find out who sang with his band and identify her.
It was a USO show at Fort Belvoir.
Okay.
The first, first roll of coat of chrome I ever took.
Wow. Okay, where is this? It's obviously Christmas, but...
That's Folsberg, France, that was my base headquarters, and that was my car. The Frenchmen were really pissed off at me for bringing a German car into France.
Okay.
But my office was, this was my office here.
Okay.
And that's the main gate.
Okay, uh, let's see. Who's that, just so I...
That's my son, that's Jeff.
Oh, that's Jeff, okay.
That's Jeff, and this is Vicki, my wife and my daughter.
And where are you?
That's at a place called Burg Lichtenberg, Burg Lichtenberg, in El Cislarain. And that's an old castle of some sort, and he's smiling, because moments later, a storm flew over and dropped a large load on his head.
Okay.
And this, by the way, is Jimmy's, um...
Paul Stapp.
Paul Stapp.
Yeah. We probably shouldn't even attempt to work him into anything to do with the presentation, but, and some of this stuff, uh, we'll go through another time, and we'll ID some more people. You said you couldn't really remember who.
I can look it up on my computer, I probably have it annotated, probably Paul Whiteman is one of them.
But it's not relevant to what we're doing on this. There's so many things, you know, like the Corrigan thing that I wish we could put in there.
And that gal there is a WASP, she was, is a...
Right, we discussed that, so I, I've got the info on that. Now, what, what's the story behind this?
Well, that's just a picture of my younger daughter in front of the Garrett Turbine Engine Company.
Okay.
We had just, just re-designated part of the unit as the Turbine Engine Company.
Okay. Did you know Delmar Benjamin?
I met him. I met him. This was down at, um, Williams Field. I first saw him at Oshkosh. He came roaring by upside down. I thought, holy mackerel.
I may have been at that airshow, because I saw him, I saw him perform.
You remember the plane that crashed there, the Corsair?
I was there. I, I filmed that.
You did.
I videotaped that crash.
I'd love to see it, because I did too. I was at a hangar number one, or tile on number one. And I noticed a little puff of smoke on his first takeoff. And I didn't think anything about it. And then I see him trailing smoke. And then I have on the video, jump, jump, jump.
Yeah.
And then he disappeared between the, or behind the head. And next I see the smoke. I'd love to see yours.
Yeah, I kind of lose him on the way down, because I was zoomed in, lost the airplane, but anyway.
Where were you, what was your position at that time?
We're sitting on the ramp, and I'd actually, uh, there was, you know, we had several family members there. And we had gone and gotten some Navajo tacos.
Yeah.
And, and I had taped a little bit, and then I, I stopped so I could eat my Navajo taco. And then I see, I see him, you know, faint, there's a faint wisp of smoke, you know. Put down my Navajo taco, picked up my camera and started filming again, and got him. You know, and he's, he's kind of doing this a little bit, and then, you know, it rolls over, and he goes.
I'd like to see that, compare our pictures.
Yeah, uh, let's see. Th- this, uh, was from Jeff Ethel. I don't think we can work that one in anywhere. Can't work that one in. Now, this is, that's Jimmy Mattern and.
Roscoe Turner.
And Roscoe Turner.
Thompson Trophy.
Yeah.
And I think it's 1937. I'm not positive, because I was there at 37 and 39. But I think he had the Thompson Trophy three or four times. I heard some very uncouth language from him as he was talking with his crew chiefs.
Uh, from Roscoe Turner?
Right.
Uh, and this is General Carroll?
No, that's Jimmy Mattern.
Oh, it's, yeah, Jimmy, Jimmy Mattern, I'm sorry. Yeah, and that's who I thought it was, and. Uh, this Jimmy Mattern, uh.
This, this was one of my favorite pictures. They were my three heroes when I was a kid.
Okay, Joe Foss.
Parr.
Parr.
Jack Parr. There are four aces in a row.
Okay.
Jerry Collinsworth. He was a Spitfire ace in North Africa.
And.
This is, um, Joe Forster.
Okay.
Yeah. Same, same one as the picture there. And he and I attended Joe's funeral out here.
Okay, oh, we'll work that in on the Knights of the Round Engine. Hang, okay, uh, and this is, that's Joe Foss.
Right. That's an early picture of the Knights of the Round Engine Table.
And who is this again?
This is Frank Robertson Jr. His father, Frank Robertson, was one of the guys that financed.
Oh, it was his father who financed?
That's right. And he has a silver box. Lindbergh gave each of his original seven financiers this silver box by Tiffany. And his is the only one that they know where it is.
Okay, um, is this a well-known photo? And this is, this is Thomas McGuire and Charles Lindbergh.
Right. It probably is. That's maybe the one that broke the news that he was in Europe, or in the, in the Far East.
Okay. Um, now, um.
He was one of the first.
Yeah, Tuskegee Airmen.
Yeah, he was, he was probably the first black Civil Airline captain that we had.
Okay, now, what's this guy's name?
John, don't know what his last name was. And he's given the Hawaiian sign. I forget what it is. Good luck sign.
Okay, uh, what I'm, well, we'll get back to that in a second. Uh, and this is obviously McGuire and Lindbergh. That's probably a, a well-known photo too.
Probably.
Um, let's see. What's the significance of this? I think you told me that I don't. It says, um.
Looks like a date up there. Two.
It says, record for experimental uh, research of high-altitude flight in the P-38. This must be a Jimmy Mattern thing.
It is.
Up to 43,000 feet in 1900. So what, what is this?
It's just a piece of paper. It was in his collection of photographs.
Okay.
It was just a piece of paper. Looked like it was torn out of a notebook. And there was a whole bunch of these. Several of them from some of his flights in Russia.
Okay, so he just, he just made notes of some things. Um, and this is one of the Doolittle Raiders?
This is Carol Glines. He was the biographer for the Raiders.
Oh.
If you've probably got some of his books.
Okay.
The Doolittle Raid, Jimmy Doolittle's life. So he was the official biographer for Jimmy Doolittle and for the Raiders. And he, he was called, he was an honorary Raider.
Okay.
And he was a good friend of mine. We were stationed together a couple of times.
Is that G or C?
C, G lines.
Okay, um. Where are you speaking here?
I'm speaking at ASU. That's, I don't know whether you've met this gal or not, Adams, Valerie Adams?
Yes, yes.
That's her class.
Okay. And where are you speaking here?
That's down at the, uh, CAF hangar. This was the same night, the same day, presumably the same time, as, uh, Dick Cole gave his flowers to the Raiders.
Yeah, I remember you telling me about that. Okay, uh.
So I think it was, um, Tom Mans's photoplay in it.
Okay, Paul Mans?
Right. Now, there's an original autograph of Saburo Sakai.
This is an original autograph?
Yes. A friend of mine wrote to Saburo Sakai and got his autograph on that picture.
Okay, I don't think anything else here, uh, will.
This is kind of interesting too. Uh, this is, uh, De Shazer. He was the gunner who was a prisoner for 40 months. Came back, became a minister, went back to Japan, met Fushida who led the attack on Pearl Harbor, converted him to Christianity, and the two of them became Christian missionaries in Japan.
And it looks like he's performing a wedding?
Right. Now, this, this girl and this girl and this girl were all daughters of, uh.
Of Doolittle Raiders?
Doolittle Raider. And so he married this one to this guy. It looks like he's a rodeo.
And, and where is this?
It was at one, one of the Raiders' conventions. I'm not sure which one.
Okay, um, this, um, I, I would like to take that and make a good scan of that. But this, if you'll notice, uh, I, that was the one thing that I did have a bullet point on, on the Doolittle Raiders, and I want you to tell that story about the Tokyo cruise photo. But I'll, I'll, uh.
Now, again, I'll make sure that what I'm saying is pure speculation. But I said, is it possible, talking to Tom Griffin, who was a map leader, that is it possible that Ski York knew he was going to fly up there and put his aim up there so that if he disappeared, let people know where he was going? He said, what do you think? I said, I'm not going to tell you what I think. And he said, let's leave it that way.
Okay. Um, what I'd like to do now, I got 14 minutes left on that battery, but I've got three more batteries, so that's not an issue. But I, I want to change the battery. But what, what I'd like to do then is, uh, after I change the battery, is I want to, I want to discuss some of these framed, uh, photos. And we'll decide which ones I want to take and, and, uh, do something with now that is relevant to this presentation.
Sure.
And then, and then I think that will, that'll take care of what we need to do today. There's still a whole lot more we need to talk about, about other subjects.
Did you want to show this one? If with the Raiders? The funny thing there is, this is Major General Jones. This is Tom Griffin, who was the navigator leader. He's from Cincinnati. His bald head was showing he was wearing Cincinnati Reds hat. So I took my Diamondbacks hat and handed it to him.
Well, I'm, I'm gonna put, uh, essentially all of the Raiders' photos in for us to scroll through.
Okay.
But, but what I want to do is, and I'm, like I say, I'm proposing that probably Tuesday we can do this. Um, I, I want to, I, I want to come back with a final, um, outline and a final order of photos that we can go through.
Good.
And then, um, and then we can, you get the thing locked in, uh, do a PowerPoint presentation, I'll get the art. So he's got it on his computer to project.
Now, as far as we're here, this, this is Will Rogers.
Oh, that was the other, I'm glad you brought that up, because this was one, and that's Will Rogers and Jimmy Mattern.
Right.
Now, what, what is the story behind this?
Well, as far as the picture itself goes, I'm not sure. But Jimmy Mattern's, in his book, is he got a call from Will Rogers. Let's go fishing in Alaska. Says, you have the airplane, I'll pay for the gas. And he said, hey, I can't do it because I've got a book signing to do and a movie. Why don't you call Wiley Post? Then you know the rest of the story. Now, I also have some pictures, color pictures from Mattern's collection, and one of them is the last airplane that they flew. And I think with Will Rogers sitting in the plane with the engine running, it was on coat of chrome. And I suspect that was in Wiley Post camera, which was recovered after the crash. And I'll find that.
Yeah, okay. All right, let me change the battery. Let's, uh, let's discuss, um, frame photos then.
You don't want to show the Queen of the Amazon?
No. Uh, wait.
Well, turn that overhead light if you want, if you want to.
Let's see.
Pete's fish and chips.
Pete's fish and chips. Uh, if, if you want to just explain what that is.
Okay. Are we shooting now or not?
Yeah, we're taping now.
This parchment here is mostly written in French and a little bit in Latin, except for one paragraph, which I'll come back to later. This is from a town in the Alsace-Lorraine area called Sandier, D-I-E. And that's named for the same saint that San Diego, California is named for. Now, every 10 years, this city has a French-American holiday. And this document is headed, "The City of Sandier, Vosges, France, Godmother of America." Now, the reason for that title is in this one paragraph, it's in English. And basically, what that says is that this was a priest who published a religious paper in, I think, 1607. And his paper says, "I propose that this new continent discovered by our friend," our friend being Amerigo Vespucchi, be named in his honor. Said, after all, in Europe, uh, European countries, uh, are named after women. So why shouldn't this continent be named after Amerigo? It must be a continent, because it's completely surrounded by water. And, uh, so anyway, in 1607, a printed document, I think printed on a, an old Gutenberg press in France, had the word America on it. Now, in 1957, General Mrs. Eisenhower was the guest of honor. In 1957, Ike had gone on to bigger things. I was the commander of the nearest Air Force Base. And my wife and I were the guests of honor. So, uh, sort of a come down of the guest of honor. Anyway, that's why I have this. And it's a good memo of a very pleasant tour in France.
Okay, well, good. Um, that unfortunately doesn't, uh, you know, that, that's not something that we're gonna be discussing. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna limit what I take today to just the stuff that we're gonna be focusing on. Um, and, um, I don't think this has got anything to do with what we're presenting, but what's, what's the story behind?
Well, that's, that's just a story. Just between you and me, I ran into a guy down in the lobby one night. And he was quite new and confused. And he was just going through a horrible divorce. And his wife lived up in Washington or Oregon or somewhere up there. And he says, I have this wonderful collection of photographs and books and so on. He said, I just left them up there. So I said, tell me a little bit more about it. So anyway, to make a long story short, she shipped them all back to him. And these are his pictures. And I told him, I said, I'm, I'm not in a position to pay you for these. But those are wonderful pictures that must not be lost to the future. So he gave them to me. And with the understanding that probably many of them would wind up at the Red Brothers Memorial, Red Brothers Hospital, of Red Brothers.
But those signatures are nothing of any personal significance to you?
Not personal to me, but they are, as on all these printed, they are signed authentically by the people who were involved.
Yeah, which, I mean, it's, it's something of, of significance, uh, but not specifically related to you.
That's right.
Yeah, okay, all right. Okay, let's, I've, I've got it. Now, um, I'm just, I'm just putting these back here only so they're not.
Sure.
Underfoot. Um, what I, what I'd like to do now is, uh, let me, um, I'm just, for right now, I'm gonna turn the camera on to, um, to show what we're talking about. Can you, can you give me, um, the, the history of this?
Yes, do you want to kill those lights or anything, or?
Um, I, well, I'm okay. This is basically for identification purposes right now that I'm, um, and trying to determine what I want to take to, to make a, you know, if it's something we want to do on the presentation. So.
Let's see, under the, a couple of pictures that I had commissioned, uh, because their signatures are authentic. But that picture there, are we, are we on now?
Yeah.
That picture there depicts the takeoff of the Doolittle Raiders from the carrier Hornet. I think it's a Hornet.
Yeah.
It's got many autographs on it, including General Doolles. And I think there's 20 or 30 autographs on there, including such guys as De Shazer and another.
Are, are those original signatures?
Those are original signatures. Generally speaking, when you buy a picture like this with signatures, they are authentic signatures on the document itself.
So how did those signatures come to be on there?
The, the general custom among the aviation authors is that they get, get with the subject of the painting. And probably for some compensation, they pay the people who are involved to sign it.
So those weren't signatures that you personally gained at, at a reunion?
That's right. They prob, so this, this was chartered, this picture, particular painting, I think was maybe chartered by Experimental Aircraft Association, sold by them.
Okay, I got it.
It's my guess that whoever the painter was got together with those people. It's my guess that whoever the painter was got together with those people at a meeting, and they all signed each of the individual prints.
Okay. That's very interesting. It could be great to display, but it's kind of a large picture.
All right.
And I'm, I'm thinking that just in the interest of simplicity and everything, we, we don't take that one, unless you really would like to take it.
No, that's right.
Okay. Let's, let's move down to the, the B-25.
Might be of interest to, to the audience, so that when you buy a picture from the painter, generally speaking, the signatures on there are authentic pictures, authentic signatures on the document itself.
Okay. Payback time. What's, what's the?
That's, that's just one of the, at the, at the Doolittle Raiders reunions, they would often sell paintings or illustrations.
Okay.
And that particular one shows the B-25, and if I remember correctly, that one's signed by Dick Cole, who was Doolittle's co-pilot on the Tokyo raid.
Yeah, I don't see a picture, or a signature on that.
I think there's a Dick Cole signature on there somewhere.
Is that something you wanna take to display?
Not necessarily.
Okay. Now, the, the drawing of General Doolittle.
Yes.
What's the story behind that?
That one I'd like to show. Milton Kniff, of course, is a very famous artist, which probably everybody knows of Terry and the Pirates.
Yeah.
And this was sold by, I think, was sold by EAA for a couple hundred dollars, but it is signed by Doolittle and Kniff, and that's one I would like to show.
Okay, that is, that's an original signature by both of them on that.
It is.
Okay, I'm, I'm gonna take this off the wall and put it here with, with what I'm gonna take. Now, let's, let's move on to the lower right.
The lower right is, is one painting by Bill Phillips, who showed many of his paintings at the Doolittle Raiders reunions. The picture above that, which we'll come to, is many of his paintings with a listing of all the Raiders.
Okay.
And I met Phillips, and I have several other of his paintings, but they are absolutely exquisite, and those paintings, if anything, they sell at a Raiders reunion is authentic.
Yeah. Did you wanna take either of those to display? I'm, I'm kind of.
I'm not too, I'm not too enthusiastic about it.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not. I, I agree with you there. So, let's, let's go up to, you know, this is the top right here, this is the Green Hornet.
That's, oh, the Green Hornet, so that's just one, another one of the ones that was sold at a reunion.
Okay.
There's some authentic autographs on it. I think it's just representative of the sixty airplanes that were on the, on the deck.
Okay. And then, the one below it, where they're on the aircraft carrier, that I presume is an, is another painting, I can't see well enough to.
Let's see.
It looks like, it looks like a painting with signatures. I don't think that would be a photograph.
I don't think so. No, that's a lost plane, no, that's not.
Okay, and then, that's a, a painting of the Wright Flyers. Okay, then, up here, we have Major General Franklin Otis Carroll, you know, it's a B-25.
Now, that's a painting that Frank Carroll and I commissioned from Paul Wenzel, and that's the B-25, the General Carroll flew a lot at Redfield. There's a picture, it's an airborne illustration of Redfield. So Frank Carroll and I had that commissioned, and the original, I think, is posted at Carroll Hall at Redfield.
Okay. Is that something you wanna take?
Probably not.
Okay. The, the photo of Lindbergh, I have.
Probably better pictures of it than that.
They're good enough for the presentation, anyway. Then there's, I forgot reflection there, can't really see that, the Spirit of St. Louis painting.
That's a painting of the Spirit of St. Louis, it's a, it's a personal interest to me, but it's not, nothing special.
Now, the Gulf Hawk IV.
Right. Now, that's a, that's one that I had commissioned by Paul Metz, Paul Wenzel. That's a two-seat replica of the Bearcat Gulf Hawk IV, and the two, the two seats, the original Gulf Hawk IV was just a single-seater.
Right.
Well, this was a replica with two seats, and I flew that, and I commissioned it from Paul Wenzel, and that crashed at the nineteen ninety-two Oshkosh show, and has been rebuilt now by some of the people at the Plains of Fame Museum.
Did you wanna take that?
I wouldn't mind taking it, because it was rather spectacular that I got to fly on that airplane.
Okay, we'll take that, and I'll, I'll, I'll wait to get that down until after we're, we're done here.
We could, we could get a much smaller picture of that if you want.
You know, that could be a really nice centerpiece to what's being displayed, because that's, that's an original painting, isn't it?
Right.
That's a rather nice painting.
It's only one in existence.
And I, and I would like to photograph that, you know, I can set up with all the proper lighting, and, and I can photograph that, you know, get a good, you know, a good digital image of it for whatever you wanna use, you know, digitally. Okay, I mean, I'm gonna pause this a second, 'cause I'm gonna move. All right, probably none of these we're gonna take, but if you wanna give me the story behind each one, we're looking at the F-86.
Okay, Paul Wenzel, a good friend of mine, he's gone now, but as he approached the end of his life, he began to give away and sell many of his paintings, and I asked him on that if he had a good painting of Gabby Gabreski, whom I'd met. Gabby was from Pennsylvania, and remember, was one of our top aces in World War II and Korea. So this was a painting that he had done of Gabby's plane, and you'll notice the name Gabby's on it. Interestingly enough, Gabby had finished his tour in Europe, was ready to come home, and he says, I wanna fly one more. I've flown enough, I wanna fly one more mission. So he was on a ground support mission, and unfortunately, he was so low that his propeller touched the ground, and he crash-landed on a German airfield. He was welcomed by the Germans, ah, Colonel Gabreski, we have been waiting for you. So that's, now then he became a chief pilot for Republic Aircraft after that.
Okay, the Northrop, I'm trying to remember which one, is that a Northrop Alpha? Or Gamma?
I, it's Gamma, I think.
Gamma, okay.
It's the model of it over there, on top of the dresser. And that, that particular plane was the one that Frank Hawks flew from Buenos Aires to Los Angeles, over the route from, from BA across the Andes up to Los Angeles, set a world speed record. And a plane like that is in the Smithsonian right now.
All right, the Spitfire and ME-109 passing each other, what's the story behind that?
That's one of those pictures that I got from a guy by the name of Jim Wright, who had this nice collection put together, and he left them with his former wife, and then he recovered them, and here they are.
Okay. And, and the same story with the P-47 photo?
No, that was a gift from my family when I retired from Garrett.
Okay. And whose signatures are on there?
The Fifty-Six Fighter Group. I think it was called Zemke's Group or Schilling's Group.
Okay.
But see, Gabreski and Schilling and several others, I think Bob Johnson's on there. But I was close to the Fifty-Six Fighter Group.
A couple of B-17 photos, one with.
Well, on the top screen?
Yeah.
Well, that's the Birth of a Legend. That was the story of.
I'm gonna take the camera off the tripod here and get a little bit better perspective on that. Okay, go ahead, and you say Birth of a Legend?
His name will come to him, and he was a very famous aviator who was shot down by the Japanese on December eighth of nineteen forty-one. He was flying out in the Philippines, and Saburo Sakai shot him down. He stayed with the plane until everybody else had bailed out, and then finally, I think he bailed out, but he was killed in the bailout. And the president of that time decreed that his son would be, would get an automatic appointment to West Point. I think that did happen. I can't think of his name right now. The one below that is the arrival at Pearl Harbor of the first B-17s, and they arrived there as the attack was taking place on Pearl Harbor.
Now, whose signatures are those?
It's countersigned, it's signed by, it's signed on the left by one of the original pilots. It's also signed by Bunky Snyder. Bunky Snyder was a real, real good friend of mine, and he was a, he was, as an aviation cadet, he was the navigator on one of the planes that landed at Pearl Harbor. He spotted the Japanese incoming before anybody else spotted them, and he went on to become one of the top flyers in the Nineteenth One Group.
Okay, well, let's move to the other side, and some of these I probably am gonna wanna take. I'm just gonna hand-hold here, so. The, let's start with the ME-109.
Okay, that again was one of the pictures that I got from Tim Wright. One of the pictures that were left over from his collection, and it's autographed by one of the top German pilots.
Okay. And then the.
The P-38 up there was a gift from Joe Forster to me, and it's signed by the wing commander and two or three of the other aces of the Fifty-Six Fighter Group.
Is that something you wanna take?
Yes, I think that's pretty good.
All right, we'll get that down then.
The Colonel Lucian, that was the third ranking ace in the Pacific.
Okay, and those are original signatures, obviously. Yeah.
The one by Joe Forster was signed by him personally, and he gave it to me shortly before he died.
This is obviously your old airplane, has the Doolittle airplane at Wright-Patterson, and who are the signatures?
It's signed by the director of the museum at the time, who was a student, by the way, or a friend of General Carl Schneider. But it's signed by several of the Raiders, I'm sure Dick Cole's signature's on there, probably Tom Griffin, and two or three of the others. But that is, the plane is on display at the National Museum of the United States Air Force, and it's the B-25 that represents General Doolittle's plane on the Tokyo raid. It is actually my airplane, the one that I flew. It was modified by North American at no expense to the government, painted with General Doolittle's tail numbers on it, but in the fuselage, is the constructor's nameplate, which shows my original serial number, which is four-three-three-seven-four, and it's signed by several of the Raiders and by the director of the museum. We're taking good care of your airplane. That's one I would like to show.
Okay. So, was there a name or any nose art on Doolittle's airplane?
You know, I believe there was, and I'll have to look that up.
Yeah, well, we can find that out.
Look it up, I'm not sure what it was.
But very few people know that that airplane was original, originally my happy ass.
That's right. Now, the placard on it, by the way, clearly states that this airplane was modified by the Air Force, was modified by North American.
Well, anyone who knows the story would have to know that that's not the original airplane.
That's right.
So.
That's right.
But there's a lot of people who don't know the original story.
One other aspect, however, the way the plane is displayed, the engines are covered with tarpaulins, as it appeared on the deck of the, of the carrier. They covered the engines with tarpaulins to protect them from saltwater. However, they are the wrong cowlings, because on my model of the B-25, we had nine little individual exhausts all around the cowl. That is not true there. In the airplane that was modified by North American, when they finished the modification, they took off the bowl nose, they took off the turrets, and they put the loose hardware for the exhaust that was on Doolittle's plane, they put it in as loose hardware. Somehow it was lost. I won't say who might have lost it, but that hardware was lost. So the plane that is now on display has the incorrect cowl, incorrect exhaust stacks covered by tarpaulins, so it looks like it did on the carrier. So only a few of the Raiders and I know that story.
Okay.
We have pictures of that plane being test-flown by Travis Hoover, who flew the number two plane, and it clearly shows Doolittle's tail number art and those individual exhaust stacks.
Okay, the volcano photo, I'm gonna take that, we'll scan it, and that'll be part of it. Do you wanna take this as part of the high flight?
Yes.
Okay. Then up top, I, I'd like to take this, and that's a copy, that's not the original, but I'd like to take that to get a, a higher quality scan of that. And then, this is Joe Forster? Is that correct?
The corner, there with the yellow goggles on it.
Oh, and.
The one in the middle is me.
That's you?
That's me with a.
That doesn't look like, what are those wings that you're wearing?
The wings on the right shoulder are the wings of the Chilean Air Force.
Oh, yes, you told me that story, yeah.
Excuse me, I think that's my phone.
Okay. I'll pause this. Okay, here's, this is a picture of Joe Forster, do you wanna take that? That photo of him?
He's the one that told me about meeting Lindbergh.
Yeah.
Gave him a mission, and he said, who's that lean guy there with no rank on him? I said, that's Mr. Lindbergh, he's flying with us now.
Okay, do you wanna take that photo?
I think so, yeah.
Okay. Then the high-flight photo, do you wanna take that?
I think so.
Okay. And then, the photo with Joe Foss, I'd really like to get a higher resolution scan of that, if you don't mind, and you probably wanna take that anyway to the, to the meeting. Then there's a picture of you and Dick Cole and Jeff, did you wanna take that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Wait a minute, that's the, the three of us?
Yes.
No, that's Tex Hill.
Oh, that's Tex Hill, looked like Dick Cole.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's Tex Hill.
Okay, well, you wanna take that?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay. And then, it looks like there's a, a nice drawing of you.
Yeah, that's.
Do you wanna take that?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's, that's the one I was trying to look, look as, look as panic.
Okay, all right, I'm gonna stop the tape here, and I'll pull those down. Start with Old Crow. What's the story behind this?
That is the plane used by, I think, is his name not shown on there?
I think it's Bud Anderson.
Bud Anderson, yeah. Colonel Bud Anderson was an ace in Europe, and he flew with Chuck Yeager quite a bit, and he's one of the legends now at the Commemorative Air Force.
Right. So is, is, that's not a photo, that's a painting, that's a copy of a painting.
It's a copy of a painting. He said, where did you get that? And I told him, he said, okay, I'll sign it.
So that's an original signature?
Correct.
So you wanna take that?
Yes, that'd be fine.
Okay, we'll, we'll do that. Then over here is.
That's you, me introducing my new bride to Al Williams. That's at the Actors Club at Wright-Patterson on the day we were married.
Okay, take or no? Wanna take that one or not?
Sure.
Okay, I'll, I'll come back and get the, okay, Carnegie Tech Young Lovers.
Yeah, that's General Carroll's daughter.
Okay, so this one is the one that we wanna take?
Okay.
That, that shows her, so, okay. Then, this looks like you're in Gulf Hawk IV with a Bearcat, or, well, you're in a Bearcat, but with a Corsair and a P-51.
Yeah, that's when I flew in that Bearcat, in the backseat, and we were being escorted by the Corsair and the P-51.
Okay. Did you wanna take that?
I think so, yeah.
Okay. Well, I'll, I'll get that, hold on a minute. Now, I have, I have a photo of this, it's, it's, you know, good enough resolution unless you'd like to get a, like me to scan something higher, but, oh, you probably wanna take that photo, anyway.
Yeah, either way, yeah.
And, and do you wanna take this photo of, of Al Williams in the, in the racer?
Yeah.
Okay, so all of the. Okay, so all of the, all three of those photos will go, let, let me stop here for a second. Next, we have someone in what looks like a field-grade officer's hat, a white hat.
Oh, that's my brother, my late brother, he was a captain of the Navy.
Okay.
A chaplain.
I have a photo of this, of you with the, with our biographer. That's obviously Gulf Hawk II, there's Gulf Hawk IV. The next one on the top is.
Jerome Westover, he was a chmee for the Air Corps before General Arnold.
Okay.
He was killed going into San Diego.
And are those original signatures?
Those are original signatures.
Okay, there's Gulf Hawk II, and this.
Al Williams' widow.
Okay.
This is a test pilot who lived here, and he flew all of the captured German, Italian, and Japanese airplanes. As a test pilot.
Okay.
And that's Billy Bishop, he became an air vice marshal.
Yeah.
In the Royal Air Force. That's him in World War I.
Then, next one?
Is that to the right?
Yes.
That's Al Williams in his Pulitzer Trophy winner in nineteen twenty-three. It was a Curtis R-3C-1, I believe.
Okay, we definitely need to scan that one, so.
That's my squadron in World War I, and it's the Ninety-First Photo Squadron, as you can see from the insignia there. And in the lower left-hand corner is Lieutenant George Kenny, who became a squadron commander, and later on a four-star general and the commander of the Pacific Air Commando, Senator MacArthur. And up in the right top standing is a man by the name of Collier, and his daughter is a good friend of mine, she lives right here in Phoenix. And below that is a picture of the Doolittle Raiders at the San Antonio reunion. And the man in the center with his hand raised is Dick Cole. And I think there are five or six of the other Raiders at that time. But Dick Cole was, his, his daughter was the one that suggested to my son that he get up on the balcony and take that picture. Which he did.
And what year is that?
Oh, the early sixties.
Okay.
And that's a picture of me down in Morocco in nineteen fifty-eight or so. I was the commander of the fighter squadron down there. We, we went down to Morocco in the wintertime, because the weather was so much better than it was in France.
And that's an F-101?
That's the 101.
Looks like an RF-101.
Right.
Okay, and then, same place, you're in the cockpit?
Right.
Okay, and then, of course, these are the flight orders, which we'd need to get a good scan of there. Okay, on, then, here at the top is Tex Hill. Okay.
And that's Eddie Rechenbach, that's an original signature from him.
Really?
I wrote to him, and he sent that back to me. Of course, he was a close friend of Al Williams also. And that's the same copy that we saw of Amelia Earp and Jimmy Mattern.
Okay, and then, I think, last one is the A-26 behind you.
Okay.
What's the story behind that?
Now, the story behind that, that was painted by Paul Wenzel, and it represented a B-26, probably during the Korean War. And the guy for whom he painted that picture didn't like it. So, he was gonna throw this one away, and I said, "Well, I'll be glad to take it." So, that belongs to me, and it's a true representation of an event that happened. But the pilot of the plane that was flying there didn't like that particular picture. So, I guess that's the significance of it.
Okay, so he did another painting, then?
Yeah, but you can see on the back end, there's a guy who was bailed out, he was a gunner. And how did he avoid hitting the tail, I don't know.
Okay, I.
I had many hours flying that type of airplane, testing field modifications for the Korean War.